Good evening, everybody. It's 6 o'clock. Let's call this meeting to order and start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the mission of the Chatham Central School District is to provide students an education that nurtures intellectual curiosity and focuses on academic and cultural foundations. Our students will graduate with the knowledge, problem-solving abilities, and character needed to participate ethically, adapt, succeed, and contribute in their future educational career and community endeavors. So, C, we'll move on to our approval of a present agenda. Can I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, so moved. Public comment period. This is a period to allow the Board of Education to hear any comments that are related to an agenda or school business.
Can we read the, uh, the mission statement out loud? Am I even reading?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, you did? I got it. Okay, sorry. I'm already reading the bottom.
Okay, stop your speed reading. Okay.
No.
That was funny. Okay, so, um, we will, um, we refer to our policy on public comment, 2310, in regard to content, limited to three minutes per speaker. Do we have anyone who has signed up to speak? Okay.
Winko YouTube. "Chatham is committing serious crimes financed illegitimately and unconscionably by New York State with our precious school taxes. Any school that claims its powerless not to finance the mass slaughter of 90,000 children for 14 months, one every 20 minutes, to this minute, is illegitimate. A school deliberately financing the extermination of 90,000 children for over a year is an unjust school. Chatham is unjust. It's unworthy of a tax dime. Chatham does not have any right to fight, to be financed, to be budgeting, to be billing taxpayers for its depraved scholasticide, the bombing of 459 Gaza-Palestine schools. This board and the employees and the war machine Wall Street it slavishly serves has no right to exist killing kids and blowing schools to smithereens. Chatham as a school is negating its express meaning and purpose by bloodily budgeting and billing me for genocide. Chatham and every other New York school have devolved into franchises of a corporate murder machine for an empire of billionaires projecting violence through Wall Street, which you guys call Nystress. This school should immediately schedule public presentations on divestment in the auditorium for the entire taxpaying parent and student community. The superintendent, regardless of his job concerns, should immediately demand divestment from illegal occupation and genocide profiteers in Nystress like Boeing, Raytheon, Kellogg Brown, and Root, Israel Discount Bank. You should argue divestment against Nystress on pain of boycotting them. It's a phantasm that Nystress will punish teachers for board or administrative action. Don't believe it. Lastly, immediately allow the public presentations at each board meeting about divestment, its costless nature, its universal benefit, even for the companies who are momentarily deprived of their funding to reform their uncivil and criminal racist war crimes. The education of the taxpayer base demands it. It's your responsibility. This institution has no legitimacy after slaughtering 100,000 students with our school taxes, after illegitimately orphaning another 100,000 Arab students, burning 1.2 million Muslim homes, flattening every Palestinian city in Gaza, and starving babies to death for the benefit of non-working, unearned, white pensioners' privilege."
Time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else who wants to speak tonight? Not here?
Okay. I will right now. Sandy Fisher, for those of you who don't me, don't know me, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the board and all the support that the school district gives the robotics teams in the middle school and the high school. We've got an elementary school program running at the Morris, and our numbers have more than doubled for both the middle school and the high school this year, and your support and encouragement of the kids is greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Okay, I think this is a good time to remind everybody, in January, we're going with a livestream option instead of using Google or Zoom. It's just, it was too cumbersome and costly. So, we're going with a strict livestream. The only downside to that is that we won't be able to interact. They'll just, everybody will be able to view in real time, and it will be posted, so anybody can see it, but there won't be any interaction portion to it. But sometime in January, we're going with that model, just to... Yeah, oh yeah, people here can talk, you know, but it just won't be anybody at home that will have to be here if they have anything that they want to say. We just want everybody to know that in advance, so there was no surprises. Okay, thanks. Okay, so now we'll move on to the building and department reports. We have a presentation from our senior team today. Oh, wait, I did it again. I skipped board comment. I do it every time.
We're good. We're good. Thank you.
I am the board comment, but I didn't allow the rest of my board members. I am sorry. Please, anybody have anything to say?
I appreciate Sandy's mention of the robotics. Sandy is one that really spearheaded this program in our school, and we, and we thank you, Sandy, for all you've done for that program and still do. Thank you.
Okay, now, good, Ashley.
So, before she begins, I just want to say, as a... No, come, come. It's about, it's about the, it's about, you know, this amazing, this amazing project that our, that our senior team does, which is called the Capstone Project. As a, as a new person to, to Chatham, I'm just incredibly impressed with what this group of teachers does in Chatham and how they inspire our kids and really prepare them for their future with this Capstone Project. So, I, I've just been incredibly impressed as a new person in Chatham. So, thank you for coming tonight and, and talking about the first stage of the project.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My name's Ashley Keegan, and I am the senior team leader here at Chatham High School. And like Andrew said, I'm going to talk to you a little about, about our first event in our senior program, which is our senior mock interview. This was our third annual senior mock interview, and it took place on November 21st of this year. I want to start with a couple thank yous, so don't forget. First and foremost, the senior team, I would echo everything that Andrew said. This group really works tirelessly to help our seniors and improve the senior program. The team consists of Megan Conley, Donna Eager, Jen Diorio, Sandy Fisher, Mark Pearson, Rodney Stickles, and of course, myself. I couldn't nor would I want to do it without them. We meet daily, and they are a fantastic group to work with. I also want to thank the Chatham community, who continues to show up for our seniors and, and this program and this school. We had 30 community members come and give their time this year, and it obviously would not be able to even be put on without the community's support. And it's, it's really exciting to have so many community members join us for this event. And lastly, on thank yous, the Chatham seniors, who continue to really engage with our program. They trust the team, I think. They trust the process, I think, and they definitely work hard to do their best, and that was really evident in this event. So, in terms of what the event is, it is a mock interview event, so students are paired with a community member for a mock interview. The interview runs about 20 to 25 minutes. We have the first half, more formal interview, and then the second, maybe 10 or 15 minutes, as kind of some informal feedback from the community member to the student. In English class, students write resumes and they write cover letters. Their cover letters are specific to the person that they are interviewing with and are modeled as an internship that they would be applying for. They research the person and the company that they are interviewing with, as well as doing some research about interviewing process in general. They practice interviewing with their classmates, and then when it's all done, they practice writing thank you cards and putting those in the mail. As a quick note, our AP students do this a little separately. All of this is built into our regular ELA class. So, our AP students also participate, but they do all the work more independently. So, they go through the same process, but not with class time devoted to it. Originally, when we started this interview kind of thing, it was done with a teacher in a school. So, the students were just paired with a teacher, which, if I'm being honest, kind of checked the box. It wasn't really authentic. For example, I once interviewed someone who was interested in being a line cook. So, we didn't have a ton in common. So, we started to really kind of talk about how to make it more authentic for our students, and we started matching, or we started realizing we needed to reach out to the community. And the first two years that we did it, we kind of put out a blank call, who can come in and help us? And then we took everybody, everybody that, that said that they could, and then we paired them with a student. And that worked, but not as well. And so, what we decided to do this year was start with the students and their interests and their future plans, and then we actively recruited people to pair with them. And by we, I mostly mean Sandy. She did most of that active recruiting for us. And that really, that really worked, I think, better to give a much more authentic experience for the student. As I said, we had 30 community members come in, including a funeral director, IT, engineering, education, trades, pharmacy, real estate, veterinary sciences, and many, many more. So, we really were able to hit on a lot of the student interests and future careers. We get feedback from both our students and our participants, and in terms of our student feedback, we kind of got what we were hoping for, which was that they learned some really valuable lessons in a pretty low-stakes environment. Ideally, this will allow them to kind of grow and adapt and take those things and give them a leg up when they are applying for college or for a job, or maybe some of their peers are going for the first time and didn't get to kind of work out the kinks. Some of the specific things that the students told us were, in terms of what they learned, were to practice and prepare. Practice, practice, practice came up over and over on their surveys, which is great. That's exactly what we want them to learn, things like practice your questions, practice your responses, practice a handshake, practice good posture, practice eye contact, all of the things that you walk into your first interview and it all kind of goes out the window. They got that experience. They also said that they would spend some more time thinking about and preparing their outfits, figuring out what is professional and being comfortable with that outfit, not having to think about it in the morning, and also giving a little time in the morning, you know, in case they had to start their car, or there was traffic, or a train, or something like that. So, again, a really valuable experience to learn now instead of in the future. They, I thought this was an interesting one. They, a couple of kids talked about filler words, that they were using a lot of ums, a lot of likes, a lot of yas, ands, and I just think that's great that they're able to kind of recognize that and practice pulling those out of their responses. And then for me personally, I think the most important thing that the students learned was to kind of right-size their anxiety. There was a lot of anxiety and nerves going into this, and I think that is appropriate. It's new, it's scary. Walking into a room and shaking a stranger's hand is different for a lot of young people. But I think what they learned was that hard things are hard, but accomplishable. And I think that is an incredibly valuable lesson. They got to strengthen their resiliency muscle and understand and I've been teaching for 16 years. I can't stand up in front of a classroom and do that. They have to actually walk in, do the hard thing, and many of us, many of their responses said that it wasn't as bad as they had made it out to be. And again, I think right-sizing that anxiety is so important today because it's really easy to get frozen, and we see it. And so, that was really great to hear. In terms of our participant feedback from our interviewees, or our interviewers, excuse me, they said that our students were really prepared. There was a lot of great feedback in terms of their experiences with the students. I think it was really nice for them to engage with young people. Not everybody has the opportunity to do that like we do. And really important to the senior team, we took a lot of their feedback. We changed and implemented new things, and that was noticed and appreciated. So, that was a good thing to know, that we were kind of moving in the right direction. And then, in terms of like what's next for the senior team, we are going to look at updating this event while it's kind of fresh in our minds. We are starting discussions about our ELL students, our upcoming ELL students, and how we can work this program in a way that they can be successful as well. We kind of want to be out in front of that as opposed to behind the ball. Right now, we don't have any 12th graders who are ELL to the level that they would need any kind of services. And we are beginning to talk about our Capstone presentation. The work will begin for students in February. That is May 16th. So, we do invite board members. You can look for an email and some more information about that as that comes, but please save that date, May 16th. It's great to have you there. And then the senior team continues our work with guidance and administration about our at-risk, at-risk students, how we can best support them and what help we can offer. So, that's kind of the long and short of our first big kind of event. I'm happy to take any questions, if there are any.
I just love this program. I'm just, I love hearing about it, and that, the fine tuning is, is amazing. So, you were able to right-size their anxiety. Do you think that'll play out in their Capstone presentations? Do you think that, or that'll be a whole fresh new set?
That's a great question. Um, I think there might need to be a reminder. I think it's, it's easy to not to think hard things are different because they're different. You know, this is walking into a room and doing an interview with a stranger that is standing up in front of, you know, faculty members delivering a thesis. But I think the core of it is the same: practice, be prepared, take a breath, know that you fill words. So, I think, yeah, I think they'll probably need a couple reminders, but I think having that in sequence and seeing it again, and we get the same feedback from our seniors in previous years that say the same thing, gosh, I made this out to be really, really, really intense and scary, and it was actually a great experience. So, I think if previous years tell me anything, that probably they will. And I think for the senior team, the more experiences we can give them, realizing that, the better.
And moving the date to later works a lot better.
I think so, yes. I think for everybody, it works a lot better. There are still, you know, I, I think there's going to be obstacles no matter where we put it in the year, but I think by and large, the benefit both for the team, for the rest of the faculty, for the seniors, for AP students, who are again in a little bit of a different boat for that, it's the best way to do it.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. That's, that's wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you for the time to come. We'll be back after the Capstone presentations to tell you a little bit about that, but I probably should have put this at, at the front too, but thank you to the board for your support for our program. It's, it's really important to us.
Yes, and definitely reach out if you're looking for, you know, when you guys are trying to sign. So, that, that's a tricky process, actually. I even got some of those emails too, and I'm like, oh, I'm trying to find people.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the board will support that any way they can.
Yeah, and we really lucked out. I mean, we, at, at one point, we were kind of having to turn some people away and say, oh, we, we actually already filled this. We really appreciate it. And we have a lot of members of our school community that, that step up as well and take interviews in their different kind of field. So, that's also really great to incorporate them into the program.
It is. It really is. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
Okay, so now we're into the principals' building update. However, you guys want to...
So, just remind the board, every other month, our principals are coming to just give you a kind of overview about what's been happening in their, in their buildings. Brett was unable to make it due to his daughter's concert, so Mike is filling in for him.
Hello? So, before I do this report, I just want to say that one of the ways that I gather information for this report is I, I go on the district Facebook page to see if there's anything that I've missed in my own personal calendar. And today, when I was doing that, I was just so impressed with all three buildings and like the level of community inside the school. Like, I see first graders working with fourth graders and pre-K kids working with, you know, middle school students, and it's just, it, it's just such a warm, good feeling to see that we really spent a lot of time thinking about community within our own school. So, side note. So, since the last time I was here, I think one of the things that I mentioned was we were coming up on the Halloween parade. We successfully did that, I would say, right? It was a successful Halloween parade. And we had a great Veterans Day celebration right after that, that the PTA puts on. They do a great job. There's a couple of things that I'd really like to highlight. One of them is Sasha and Lion came with a group of students to do a presentation to our fifth graders about Ascend. And I really didn't know what to expect. I went and sat in on one of them, and I didn't really know what to expect. But not only did they do this presentation, but they had these two great activities for the fifth graders that they loved. So, I shout out, you did an awesome job, and I hope you get some good candidates. We have done two successful student assemblies, both about character. The first one was about respect, and the second one was about gratitude. And then in those assemblies, I give out a principals' award, and Mr. Raulson gives out a dean of students' award, and that's to one student each for outstanding character. So, we've done two of those. Our next assembly is next Thursday, I believe, and it's, we're going to be focusing on the word honesty for the month of January. On November 13th, we celebrated Kindness Day at the elementary school, and so we paired up a lot of different classes, and the expectation that I had was do something nice for another class. And so, they did that. We, we tried to pair them up, so they were kind of like kindergarten with fifth grade. So, they were kind of spread apart in age, and, you know, it looks like they had a great time. I actually was not there on that day, but it looks like from the pictures, they had a great time. A shout out to our teachers and, and especially our families. We raised 2,098 pairs of socks first October to donate to the shelters. We donated to three shelters. There's a cold-weather shelter in Hudson, the First Reform Church of Hudson. We donated to St. Paul's in Renslerville, Rensler, Rensler, not Renslerville, Rensler, New York, and then to the Elizabeth Freeman Center in Pittsfield, and they were all very appreciative. We got excellent feedback. We also did adopt a soldier. I know middle school did adopt a soldier too. And they came and they picked up all the items that we adopted for soldiers to send overseas, so that was awesome. Sasha mentioned this last time, and I can't believe I didn't put it in my report, high school helpers. They are at, uh, they are a hot commodity at our school. They come in, they sign in, they're happy. I love seeing them in there. Today, I was getting set up for a faculty meeting, and there was a high school helper in the library, and it just, it's, they're, it's awesome to see them in the building, and it is so important for the elementary kids to see their, you know, what I would consider older friends in the building. It's, it's just so important, and it's, it's great for everybody. And I was very happy to hear that you guys like coming down here, coming down to us. We had successful parent-teacher conferences. I know I'm trying to go fast for you, Muriel. We had successful parent-teacher conferences. We did a district safety tour, where, I don't know if Andrew talked to you about that at all, but we went around and visited different safety sites. And tomorrow, I am going to, with some teachers, to a dyslexia conference, and I'm pretty excited about. So, there are some things that have been going on in the elementary school. I'll turn it over to Mike, unless anybody has any questions. No, we're good. Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for, it's nice to be up here speaking. Mr. Fortune had a concert for his family this evening, so he's doing that. Before I start, I wanted to kind of share, just every month, I do a kind of, we do a kind of survey with students. And one of my favorite things is sitting in my office, and there's a section where I ask them a question, and there's a list of things. And to me, the list tells a little bit of a story. So, before I give you the updates, I kind of want to read one portion of the thing that comes to me in the survey, and I'm just going to read the list. And it's one thing I want my teachers to know, so the kids, that's one question on it. And I think by extension, it includes you, like one thing the board might want to know. So, I did take out all the I-don't-knows, so there were a lot of IDKs and nothings, so I did take those out, but I just left the ones, and the ones that had student names. But for the most part, this is just the entire list. So, I think it, it tells a little bit of a story and gives context to the, the things I'll just update you on. So, I, I like reading it, so I thought I'd share it. One thing I want my teachers to know, or the board, I guess. I like school. I need help with reading. I'm funny. They are good. I'm happy. Thank you for helping me with my homework. I'm good at sports, like baseball. I don't have many friends in my class. I love everyone in this school to the moon and back. Drawing in class helps me focus. If I ask for help, it's not because I'm not trying. I just genuinely don't understand. I have ADHD, and I fidget a lot. I do not like homework. They are good teachers. I love CMS, love friends. I get bored easy. I'm usually tired, so please stay patient. I love turtles. Don't be afraid to ask if we need help. I work very hard in school, and I try to get good grades. My pronouns are he/him or they/them. I want to be a barrel racer. I have interests in many clubs. I'm kind. I'm a quick learner. That we should do more group activities. I don't like school. Way too much homework and give less time, and gives less time to enjoy our lives. Just hi. I'm a visual learner. I want less homework. I like turtles. I think they filled that out twice. This is one of my favorite schools. I've gone to so far in my lifetime. There are no bullies at all, and everyone just knows and talks to everyone. Think you would get different answers for that too, from other students, but I thought that was nice. And I can learn quickly. So, just before I started, I just, I always love reading that list. I think it tells a little bit of a story. 67 responses, so it's not everyone, but it's, it's a snippet. So, in November, we was Thankfulness Month. Veterans Day was a huge thing in our building. It's always like a tear-jerker. So, that was big. We had Judy Matthews come in to present to the kids on food insecurity at our local, and the local pantry. We did mock interviews for facts, sort of connecting to the high school. NCBI ran circles in sixth grade. We had parent-teacher conferences. SpongeBob the Musical was a huge hit, and well-attended. We've done Thanksgiving baskets for 15 families. Our eighth graders came to do Shakespeare and Company, to do the high school, for the high school students. This month is gratefulness, so we've kicked off our door decorating contest, which is well underway. There's a lot of stuff going on with that. Teach, very competitive, I'll just say that. Career Day for sixth grade is coming up. We have a senior citizen luncheon coming up, and there are 108 senior citizens, that's a record, signed up, and our students serve them. Holiday stockings. December 19th, right before the break, we have our big annual staff versus grade-level holiday volleyball tournament, which is like a huge event for the building, so that's coming up. Just some other things worth mentioning, grade seven, just in terms of academics, there were 30 honor roll students, 11 high honor roll. And in eighth grade, there were 32 honor roll students, seven high honor rolls. For grade six, for the first quarter, we don't do honor roll, just as a trend, to transition students into the middle school. We've done a lot of work. Yesterday, we had a great meeting with our teachers that Mr. Fortune set up, talking about data. Mr. Bordell was there. It was a great, really a great thing, looking at our data and how we can get better and meet the needs of students. All our lockdown drills are done, and our fire drills that are supposed to be done by January 1st are finished. We've got holiday concerts coming up. Our sports teams are now up and running. And our, our clubs are all up and running, and, and students are doing those. So, I don't know if you have any questions, but that's kind of the summary.
I just wanted to comment on that survey. That just, that was amazing. I, I love hearing that honest feedback. That, that was great. So, how often do you do those surveys?
I try to do them monthly, and then try to look for trends, and, but those are my favorite. And, but those are my favorite parts of just seeing what the students say. And I try to share them with teachers.
That's a neat idea. That really is. That's a great idea. We have a lot going on.
And that's from the whole building, or just the grade?
It's, they're not required, but it's sent out. We do an announcement, please fill out the survey. So, it's not like we force them to do it. Yeah, anybody that wants to, we're always, Mr. Fortune and I are always asking for their feedback, and we do use it to make, you know, make adjustments to things and give students a chance to share things that they, you know, might not have a chance to share otherwise.
Have you seen an increase in participation since you've started?
Pretty good. Definitely, it's, our sixth graders are, it's, are more into it than our eighth graders after, after a while. But, you know, they do, there are things that pop up often that are, would surprise you, that we can address, and I could share if you wanted. There's like more graphs, just on, just general numbers of like, how are you feeling about school? And how are you feeling supported? And those kind of things. And if students, like, give a one answer, I'll usually follow up, just kind of check in. And our guidance team will check in, and we'll just kind of see what's going on.
That's fantastic. Thank you. I'm really glad you brought that out.
It's interesting, listening to the elementary school and the middle school go before me. As we came over, as I took this job, I have also become a Chatham parent. And so, I'm listening to the things that are enriching my dinner table conversations as well as the reports from my colleagues. And I'll have you know, Betsy has her eye on the golden shoe. That's the one, that's the award she wants. But those, those assemblies, and certainly SpongeBob certainly made a big difference to students that I know. So, thank you. And I know since I've been here last, you've heard a lot about the activities and going on at Chatham High School from our student representative. And she's going to come in just a few minutes to talk about a lot of the student life and activities of our school. So, I'm going to focus a little bit more on what's happening on the faculty side of things this week. I do want to, I know I do want to hit that. I'm excited that our sports have started. JV basketball was getting beat when I came over here. But there's always a chance that they pulled it through, and varsity basketball's going right now. And rehearsals for our spring musical have started, and we're all super excited about that. And that's all of your thunder I will steal, I promise. We have a lot going on here. In the rounds that I've done through the building in just the past week, you, if you had been with me, you would have seen students balancing equations, measuring heat transfer through different mediums, discussing catcher in the rye in book circles, preparing to eat foods that they themselves prepared based on recipes from Latin America, firing ceramics that they had sculpted, predicting traits of inheritance from different genetic compositions. And, you know, discussing the very brief appearance of martial law in South Korea. And that's just from, you know, one afternoon, essentially. It's, there's a lot going on here in the classrooms, and it's really hard to encapsulate. But without fail, as I walk through the classrooms, things are going on that are meaningful and impactful in students' education. And I want to make sure that that gets mentioned and highlighted, because there's some excellent work going on here. In our most recent faculty meeting in November, I reported out to the faculty a little bit of a summary of the work I did from an entry plan, part of which was to meet with all the faculty and as many groups in the community as I could. And just I summarized for them what I heard, and kind of reflected back. And I heard three major themes throughout that process of getting to know the community. The first theme, especially from the faculty, is that the faculty here in the high school really appreciate their colleagues in a way that is remarkable to me. And they enjoy their collegial relationships and rely on that, and work hard to make this a place where they all want to come to be. The second thing I heard is that they appreciate their students. I think we are aware that we have a remarkable group of students here, and I have come to share that appreciation, as I've been getting to know the student body as well. And the third theme that I heard from the faculty is they are eager to do excellent work with and for this student body. So, in keeping with that third theme, we've embarked on two kind of major discussions in our think tank group, as well as in our most recent Principal Ed Monday meeting. The think tank is starting a discussion around the capstone skills, building out a rubric on those capstone skills so that we can make them very operational and very communicable, so that when we talk about things like problem solving and situational awareness, we can articulate clearly what we mean by that, how to exhibit it, and give very clear feedback on those parameters as we, you know, kind of continually seek to improve and pull our capstone program forward. And the other conversation that we've started is we have, you know, dozens of classes, and they all have syllabi. And teachers are very thoughtful about the procedures they put in their syllabi for late work, absenteeism. And one thing that I think we all agree on is that clarity is kindness. And the more consistent we can be from class to class and teacher to teacher with some of those procedures, I think the better. So, we started a conversation amongst the faculty here in this room yesterday about alignment of some of those classroom procedures. We also have, similar to the middle school, a day coming up to work with our data coaches from OSIS. And we're very excited about that. That's coming up for us on December 17th. So, there's lots of good work going on here. You'll hear a lot about the student life side of things when Sasha starts to give her report. But it's been a very productive few weeks here in Chatham.
Thank you. I like hearing that perspective of the faculty. That was, that was excellent. Very, I really appreciate. I love getting a whole picture of what is actually happening in these buildings. We don't get to see that unless, you know, we hear from you. So, this is why this, my favorite reports, is when I hear from you guys and like from the senior team, Ashley. It's, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I don't have any questions. Does anybody have any questions? No? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
It was nice to hear from you.
Thank you for coming.
Let's see now. All right. Well, Sasha, he queued up for you, so knock it out of the park.
All right. I've got, pretty short since, one of the two weeks since I spoke with you last. We were on break. It was a very nice break. Everyone was happy to have a little break, but then I was also very happy to be back. Aiden Brennan and Paxton Brownell represented Chatham High School and Allstate. I believe they left Wednesday or Thursday of last week, and then came back over the weekend. And I heard great reports from that, from both Aiden and Paxton. The school store, the Panther Den, has been up and running for a couple of weeks now. It sells various things, like pens, notebooks, earbuds. I believe they're printing t-shirts now, and it's a student-run store, so that's really cool. Winter sports have started. Mr. Wheat touched on Greece. There is, through the newspaper club, there is a new article about Mr. Bordell on there. If anyone wants to go check it out. And they are working on a new one about student government as well, and Miss Montgomery and the different elected officers. Also, I know I've mentioned a couple of times, but the Krispy Kreme fundraiser is up and going, and I got permission from Mr. Wheat to advertise it to all of you. And if any of you would like to order donuts from me, you're welcome to do that after. They're $12 a dozen. There's a middle school concert. I don't know if anyone mentioned that. I have December 18th written down. That's correct. And I think that's all I have. Very short week, but.
Thank you very much. So very eventful.
I have a quick question. So, how many applicants did you have for Ascend?
So, through.
And maybe explain what that means, the applicants from.
Yeah, so we're getting, on our Ascend committee that we've talked to you guys about a couple of times, we're getting a representative from the middle school and the elementary school. I believe from the middle school, we had three official applicants. And then we extended the deadline to the, the elementary school had three. We extended the middle school deadline to later in the week. But, wait, no, I got that mixed up. The, middle school had three. We extended for the elementary school. But based on the survey, we had like over 30 kids that were interested in doing it. So, we're thinking of ways to be able to involve more students than just the one, since there are so many that are interested.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty telling, you know, really, how many kids want to take a, have a say in their school.
Thirty from which building?
The elementary school.
And then three from the middle school, which is still pretty. And, because you only met with at the middle school, what, 10 kids?
Yeah, we met with the, a certain group, and then.
The key club, I think.
Key communicators. And then with the elementary school, we met with the entire fifth grade.
That's great. That is, that's really great. Hey, anybody else have any questions? All right. Thank you, Sasha. Okay. Andrew, superintendent's reports.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So, the first business I want to talk about is football. So, as I presented, for the past several weeks, we have been really trying to figure out the future of Chatham football. And last time, I made the recommendation that I recommended that we move along with a hopeful merger with Ichabod Crane. We were looking at, for those of you that maybe were here at the last meeting, we were looking at two different districts that showed interest in merging. That was to Conic Hills and Ichabod. And based on research, and based on finances, and based on distance, my recommendation to the board was that we go with Ichabod. After we met, I told the Ichabod superintendent that we, the district is very interested in a merge relationship. Their Board of Education met last week, and they agreed to move forward. So, that is really, really exciting news for the future of Chatham football. So, it's very, very likely that we will be merging our football teams. This would allow us to have a modified, a JV, and a varsity team. In these discussions, we talked about a 50-50 relationship. That means we are splitting everything. It's not going to be the Ichabod team or the Chatham team. We're going to condense and have one name. We're going to have one uniform. We're going to be sharing home games, sharing transportation, sharing coaches. It's going to be a true 50-50 relationship. So, our next step is we're meeting both teams. Our, both groups are going to be meeting, and the administrative team, the athletic directors, will be meeting with each other next Friday. We'll be going, you know, meeting together and really trying to, to figure out logistics and really trying to put together a contract that we can really decide on. From there, then, we're going to have a parent meeting, a community meeting, that we were going to really share, you know, the future of it, what it's going to look like. We're going to invite students. We have to talk logistics about that next Friday, because my recommendation is to do it as both districts, that we would do it together, unified, and the message would come out the same. All communications will come out the same, because going forward, as long as we can agree on this contract, it's going to be a 50-50 partnership. So, the communication will, will be coming together. So, that's the plan with football. It's very exciting. You know, we, we've been, all the feedback that I've received from our community has been nothing but positive, from several families that we talked to, from all the football coaches. I think, I know our community understands at this point, to move forward with football, we have to do a merge program. So, I'm really, really thankful that Ichabod is willing to move forward, and I will keep the board updated. Like I said, what we're doing is we're going to have a document that's going to be signed with both, by both districts, and it's going to be an agreement that our attorneys will look at to make sure it's all, you know, all to the book. But everything will be in writing for this partnership. Any questions on that, board members? Okay, excellent. More info to come. So, another thing I want to talk about, one, one big goal, as we know, one of our goals here at the district is school safety. So, we are putting together a safety threat assessment team. So, this, what this means is, this is when we have, when we have things that happen that really make us feel uneasy, as a teacher, as a school administrator. Maybe a student will say something, maybe they'll, they'll say something about themselves, or really creating just a really uneasy kind of feeling. Rather than having to deal with it alone, we're going to be creating a district team and a building-level team to really look at these threat assessments. This is a whole process. I'm working with Needham to help us with this. We'll be making a procedure for the district, where it will be very specific, what we would do, who would meet. And then there's going to be an assessment form that we're filling out. So, we're starting this process. And actually, we have a meeting tomorrow that's going to review the process. We're going to create that procedure. We are going to adopt some sort of evaluation that we'll be filling out, and then some documentation. So, that way, if something happens or a threat is made, it's documented, and we can really track it and really help support that student. It's a very, it's a very, you know, it's, rather than waiting for something to happen, we're really being a proactive approach of supporting kids and documenting any concerns that we have as a community. So, this, this will be a process that we'll be building, and I'll be sharing with the board what that process is as we develop it. The other thing I wanted to talk about, Deb, if you wouldn't mind passing these out for me. So, we have, Brian is here. As we all know, we've talked about before, Brian is retiring at the end of this year. So, it's been really important. Brian and I've had a lot of discussion about the future of his position. So, what I'm sharing with you is a job description for the position. I think it's very important to have all the, the expectations for the position, so we can post that, so we can find the right candidate for the position. So, as we know, Brian is retiring, I'm at the end of June. But my goal is to get someone in here in the spring, so they can shadow Brian. Brian has done a lot of work to build relationships with students and their parents, and I want to use his expertise as quickly as we can. So, this position was posted today. I posted it on OLAS. I posted it on the Sanes website and some other sites. So, we are starting to recruit for a new director for this position. So, I wanted to share the job description with you. Let me know if you have any questions on it. Brian and I kind of worked together on this, and I said, Brian, I want you to tell me all the great things that you do. And we put it into a document, and I added a couple, couple additions that you'll notice is really additional support with our, with our mental health team. That's something that I've been working really hard on since I've become superintendent, to meet with our school psychologists, our social workers, our guidance counselors on a regular basis, to really support them in their mental health work. And another addition, this position's also going to be overseeing the socially-emotional curriculum and programs that we have within the district. So, there's one point person district-wide. So, you'll see, the position is called, what did I call it, Mike? I went back and forth for a long time today on that. Thank you. Director of Student Support Services and CSE Director. Because it's more than just special education, it's really just supporting students in general that this position will be helping with. So, that is the job. It is posted already, and we look forward to starting that process. I know, right? It's hard to, it's not one person. There's always a team. There's always a team to support. But you'll see, it's not an easy job, right? And, and, and that's what we're hoping, to find the right candidate, like we have been very fortunate in other positions. And the last thing I wanted to mention was library director. So, we are, Mike and I, we have been in the process of interviewing for the library director. We're currently in process as we speak, and we're hoping we can make an announcement. Hopefully, we can get that right candidate within the next couple of weeks. So, more info to come on that as we go. Questions?
Sorry, was that, you did, you did get candidates?
We did. We interviewed last week.
How many?
So, we had about seven. Seven apply. We had five at first, two unfortunately couldn't, decided not to come to the interview, so we interviewed three candidates.
And those three were fully licensed?
Correct. So, they had all the credentials, as we talked about. This, because of the size of our library, the person had to have a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, and a certificate. So, it's really hard to find somebody that has all of those things. But we found three that we interviewed. Yeah?
So, in, I want to go back to this.
Sure.
In, in a recognition of, of all the great things Brian does, we changed the, the position title, was that three years ago? Three, three years ago. Similar sounding title.
Yeah. I really took the pupil, I took the pupil and added the word student to it, maybe a little bit more.
The job responsibilities, how, how much continuity is here on the, the responsibility? The job responsibilities, how how much continuity is here on the responsibility list? Is it the same scope?
Yeah, so literally Brian really helped me develop that because I asked him, Brian, tell me everything that you do.
We're never going to hire another Brian.
I know we're not, but we're going to try. We're going to try. Big shoes to fill. So the only, the only things that are different really in there is really that honing in on the socially emotional learning piece of it, that curriculum piece. But those are all the things that Brian currently does. One thing that we did do to help with that, because we've talked about that, is we've added co-CSE chairs. And and you have approved that. So what that means is that opens up because, Brian, how many meetings did you do last year? Do you recall? Do you have a over three hundred CSE meetings? So imagine that on top of all of that. So what we've talked about is we said, you know, does Brian have to, does Brian have to chair every single one of those meetings? And the answer is no, he doesn't. So we, we, what we did is we developed a system where we can have co-chairs for some of the meetings that aren't changing. So that way it would open up this director to do some of those other things out there. So we started that. We just, Brian, we just posted those and I believe, are they on your agenda this?
They are. Did we need an MOA for that?
No, no. We, I worked with the union on it. We came up with a, no, you don't need that was worked through with the union. You remember, we did the same thing for the five oh four. But it opens up that position so that way the the person and Brian doesn't have to do three hundred meetings. They can break it up a little bit. It's hard for one person to respond because, you know, it's not just the annual review meetings. It's anytime a parent recommends or a teacher recommends those meetings. That's so there's a little bit more flexibility.
So I I'm familiar with the system for teachers, but this doesn't go to OLAS, right? Where where does this get circulated?
So we did put it on OLAS, but I also put it on Sanes and there's a couple of other special ed sites on there. So Sanes would be your current administrators, your people. That's, that is the best place really to put your administrative roles.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's it.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, great. So now on to our academic update. Terry?
Great. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Quick update this this meeting this month. So both Miles and Mike mentioned we started the data meetings and these will occur in all three buildings. Yesterday, we met at the at the middle school. We analyzed the twenty twenty four, three through eight ALA math and science assessments. Both Brett and Mike were present, several teachers and and folks we work with, data folks and content specialists from Questar Three. These meetings will continue at MED and at the high school within the next week. The conversations were really, really good, deep, thoughtful, insightful. Ideas were shared. It went beyond simply looking at, here's all the results. Let's go on to the next page. It was, let's look at this question and see how we did. And what standards are in here? Do we see any patterns? You know, with the new science test, there was a lot of strong reactions across the state with those tests. So the discussions we had were great and I think we're building plans and making decisions based on that data. That that was really good. And I I just want to recognize the middle school staff and thank them for their engagement. They're just great conversations. So day one and one building and and it was really good. Looking forward to the MED and high school.
Terry, can I just add something? Just to remind the board, we talked about, you know, really, I've been planning these data meetings out with Terry. And we chose to make sure we have these conversations with the teachers first before we share them publicly with you. So just to remind you, because it's really, it's really important to do that, you know, our teachers should see that data and be able to really look at the data and be able to use all the tools. So just to remind the board, at next, next month's meeting, we have our our data analysts from Questar coming to present the data to you. So you'll be getting all that testing data and all the, and they'll be reviewing all the different tools that they're utilizing and giving to the teachers. So that's coming up in January. Just wanted to remind you that.
Another kind of mini project to start, but I think it's going to turn into a bigger one, is looking into enhancing our integrated co-teaching model with E and L teachers. We're we're using internal resources, resources from the Arburn and resources from the T-Sol program at Siena, which we have a few of our staff attending part of that. The focus so far, little things in in the last time we met wasn't that long ago, but we've already started talking about coal planning time, how to structure and utilize the resources, especially the human resources in the classroom to better meet the needs of the kids. And and just to apply a continuous improvement model in there and and everybody kind of rolling in the same direction. And again, having really good discussions. And I think we're off to a great start. And I look forward to telling you more good stuff happening in that as we get through the year a little further. But very encouraged. So we're off to a very good beginning there. And and lastly, yesterday, Andrew and I met with representatives from Wright Technologies and learned about their product called Wright Path. And Wright Path is a tool that will provide strong, clear organization to the immense amount of student data that we collect and analyze. The strongest benefits, I think, of this tool, clarity, the fact that the company will tailor the tool to meet our specific needs here in Chatham. It's super user friendly and the company has been really great to interact with, more than willing to help. And you don't feel like you're talking to a, you know, Fortune five hundred company when you're talking to them. They're just very personable and and easy to interact with. And this meeting that Andrew and I had went so well that we had an instructional leadership team meeting today and we invited them to join us virtually again. And Brian and Kristen and and Mike and the and the team, I think the feedback that we got was everyone really was pretty impressed. So we're going to continue to look at that. You know, with all the data, again, data is just so big, you know, it's an understatement. But when there's spreadsheets and then a different spreadsheet and how we're collecting it, and sometimes that's the, you know, that expression like herding cats. You almost feel like you get overwhelmed because there's so many different things. And people get overwhelmed and to try to use that data effectively, I think we need something like this. So really great tool and very, very encouraged that I think it's something that will be user friendly. And I I want to share this with, you know, the AIS teachers and team to start and see, get their feedback and see what they think of it. They would play a major role in this too, but it would be really used by all the teachers, the whole administrative administrative team. And I think it'll be something that's that's helpful and and a really great resource.
Any questions?
Thanks.
Does our Questar data resource have experience with a vendor?
They do. It's actually our, it's our model schools, often kind of brokers, software purchases and things. And it's part of the aid package and whatnot. And this this product is part of that. And so they would provide support.
That's coservs affordable?
Yes, yes. And they've worked with this company before. As a matter of fact, the person we talked to today knew, knew them by name. So that was kind of good.
Back to your observations about the the ELL training you're doing, or I guess that's an alternative to push-ins, right, to the co-teaching?
Do, yeah, doing both. So depending on where a student, you know, what the NICE aside score dictates, whether it's integrated co-teaching or a or a standalone, still do both. One doesn't replace the other. But this is focusing on one of the, sometimes I think one of the hardest pieces of that is integrated co-teaching at the high school because it is so content rich. And I just think if you've never think of a senior level class, it could be physics or or Algebra II, as I look at Ken or Ashley's class. I mean, it's hard to ask an E and L teacher to go in and hey, go co-teach Algebra II. But there's, there are, there are effective strategies that an E and L teacher can come in and and do really in any class. So but that piece of it, the standalone, those classes would still exist and happen where I just was sharing the fact that I think that co-teaching piece is probably the most challenging part of that.
They're, the students, they're getting baseline at the beginning of the year on like, what, a four level scale or something?
Yeah, I don't remember all of them. It goes from beginner, ends at commanding. There's
But there, but there's a system there.
There is, yes.
The one of the things I asked at the beginning, beginning of the year, you may know offhand at this point, was Andrew brought us a report with all the new ELL growth. And I said, where are all, where are these students? And at that, at that exact moment, we didn't know. Are they, is that growth in primary or is it primary and secondary pretty equally?
It seems lately from since I've been here more at MED, but I think it's between all three buildings. But that's where I have seen the most since I've been here. But as far as the breakdown in numbers, I'm not sure off the top of my head where all the students are, but that's where I've seen new students come in, literally in the last week to week and a half.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick it to items for future agenda, but some of the things you just mentioned, the the baseline scoring of the students, I, you probably do it three times a year or twice a year, something like that.
The NICE is that's just once.
Just, just once a year.
That one.
Having baseline accountability at the board level, as well as where are these students in, you know, in their pre-K twelve arc? I would love to have that reporting come all the way up to the board. And I don't know, it might take up like a a cycle to collect that stuff, but maybe we could just discuss that briefly in in future agenda items. But I don't have a particular urgency, other than once a year, it'd be good to look at those numbers.
Yeah, we can, we can do. We can put together an ELL student. And what other information would you be? So what grade level kids are coming, what the numbers are. And maybe, and maybe what we could do is over time, over the last five years, what the numbers, try to look back to see, just so you can see the increase. Is that something?
Could go back, but I'm more interested in forward, just like beginning to start to get that exposure, but also the I'm actually I'm a little concerned. We're only baselining once a year, actually. And but that's a whole nother.
That's, and that's a state assessment. That doesn't mean our teachers aren't doing additional.
No, I, I, but some type of qualitative or quantitative.
Yep. So one thing we can do, Terry, is on that NICE slot they give, is that, do they do a one, two, three, four rating? What do they rate them at?
There's a little more than that.
So we can, we can give the rating, obviously without the number, and just show you where they're at and what level they're at. Yeah, we can definitely put something together.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thanks, Terry. Appreciate it. Okay, Mike, operational update and financial reserve plan review.
So the reserve plan. So we met with finance committee and our two community members and we went through every page of this reserve plan. Tonight, I'm just going to go through some highlights. Okay, so. All right, so let's go to that slide for the summary for year end. So pretty much the plan, I updated the plan. We've had this in place. I think this is the ninth year. We've had a reserve plan since I started here almost thirteen years ago. We formally adopted this after the state audit came in and said you should formally adopt it at a board meeting. So we set up parameters and we kept the majority of the parameters the same in the reserves. So if we look at the plan here, you can see the bottom line number. So this is all our reserves. We want three point five eight seven million. We put two million into a capital reserve for a future project. But I also put quite a bit more money in the ERS reserve. And what we did in those parameters, it used to be fifteen to twenty percent of payroll is what we use. And we had twenty percent of payroll in that reserve. We, I increased that to twenty two to twenty seven percent of payroll. And in the plan, it states the reason why is we had the, last year, the governor was going to look at taking away our foundation aid because for Save Harmless. The Rockefeller Institute report is being, was being done at the time over, you know, just recently. It came out. We'll talk about that after this. So we wanted to protect ourselves depending on what what happens with our Save Harmless aid. So we put a little more money in that. As you can see, we have a number of reserves. And the unassigned, I did want to point out, we always, since I've been here, we stay at four percent of next year's budget, which is the statutory allowed amount. And then any other reserve that has limits like TRS, you can put two percent a year up to ten percent of payroll. We follow that. And like I said, the other reserves that don't have the restrictions, that's where we decide what the parameters are going to be. So you can see it was a good year. Two big things, I negotiated interest rates last summer. So rates were, as rates went up, they were about two percent. We got up to five percent. They were actually better than the funds. So that gave us almost a million dollars extra than we planned. One, you know, interest rates right now are slowly going down again, so that can go up and that can go down, but that helped us tremendously. And then we also took the grant money, the federal grants. We had the, basically everything at year end that we didn't spend, we put towards our, you know, put towards our our reserves. So those are two big pieces that that obviously the federal grants are gone. So that money is going to be gone and interest rates are dying or dropping. So that won't be, you know, quite as good as next year. And if we can go to the the last slide with the graph. So as I said, we went over and we had two new community members and some new board members that sat on this committee. So we did go over every page and the parameters and discussed everything in detail. But this is the graph we put in place and we updated. I used to show one line. Now I show a base case in yellow, worst case in red. And green is, you know, the best case scenario. So with these parameters, you can see it's actually even the base and the the base case and the worst case are kind of getting closer now. You know, years past, we used to have a few extra years that went out. And what happened was because even our mainly on our operating aid, foundation aid last year was held flat. So I'm not anticipating any money. I'm actually anticipating decreases in the model. And our reimbursable aids, as we became wealth wealthier with our property value, that's dropped our BOCs and transportation and all our reimbursement. So those have dropped and they're continuing to drop. As I said, though, the good thing, positive side of this is worst case, base case, I mean, we still have years to make decisions. You know, we're not sitting with no reserves where districts are going to be in major challenges if the Save Harmless goes away. So that that is the best thing. We prepared for this and, you know, we're getting ready for what, you know, what's, you know, what might come up in the future. And then the last piece I had, and then I'll take questions, is just wanted, the Rockefeller Institute. So the study came out. So the budget called for a study of the state's foundation aids that are operating to be conducted by the Rockefeller Institute. So this is a public policy think tank that cuts, conducts research and analysis regarding problems facing the state, and they provide recommendations to these issues. So they had five public hearings throughout the state. I actually zoomed into two of them. And so then everyone, the stakeholders and the school districts had come out and plead their case about foundation aid, making changes. So a lot of it was to try to update the foundation aid formula. And then people, obviously, you know, there's what, three hundred thirty seven districts out of seven hundred that were going to be impacted by Save Harmless. So we're fighting for the Save Harmless. Three thirty, three hundred thirty seven out of seven hundred. So there's a significant number. They also accepted online input. So they did all this. And by December, early December, they were supposed to have the report. So they had the report and it was three hundred fourteen pages. So Andrew and I are going to sit on some webinars to get some analysis. But I actually went right to the Save Harmless provision. That was the main thing for us. So I didn't realize that has been placed in since nineteen seventy six. So we've always had that protection. And so this allows for districts to receive the same amount of aid as the previous year. And the, our main issue is declining enrollment. So if you run the formula, like last year, we would lose one point eight million dollars. Obviously, that's a significant amount of money. So the study recommended, unfortunately, you know, the the study did recommend to get rid of the Save Harmless provision. They said it should ultimately go away and have a phase out schedule should be three to five years. So what they stated that if you look at income and wealth of districts, unfortunately, you know, we have high wealth and high income. They should establish thresholds and then that wealthier take more aid upfront of the Save Harmless. And they also looked at enrollment losses, which we've had over the last ten years, which would have triggers to reduce Save Harmless allocations. So from their report, you know, that didn't, I was hoping for a little bit more leeway and things, but it's kind of what the governor wanted. It's kind of backing what she wanted. So we are preparing for that. The other thing the report did recommend, and I mentioned in our report, we keep four percent by statutory limit. I've done that my nineteen years in two districts. They actually reviewed all the reserves and they can get that, they can get that off the, we have to send all that information to the state every year. So they recommend that if you have enrollment loss of fifteen percent over or more and you have over four percent in your reserves, they should just take that for the Save Harmless. They should take that money back, the state. they should just take that for the save harmless. They should take that money back, the state. And if you're on assigned fund balances over 10%, then they should take all that money to imply it to save harmless. So we have kept those parameters. There was actually a significant, I was surprised the number of districts. There was 400 and I think 12 that stayed within the 4%. And then another, you know, close to 300 that were over that amount. So that's why we were careful with that because they can pull that data and that, that is the recommendation, say, hey, you have over your 4%. We should take that and not pay you. Like I said, we have our reserves and we're at the 4%. So we're fine in that piece. So the only, the main hope I'm hoping is that the governor's, I think it's 2026 is the election. So there is some discussion in that. So we might get, I'm hoping for a reprieve of another year. Not counting on it, you know, and then obviously if, you know, after the election. But right now it looks like, I mean, these, it does look like the stuff that she wanted to do, that backs what she, they want to do. Maybe three to five years, but it'd still be a significant amount of cuts for our district of an aid. And then we'd have to figure out how we're going to handle that. But we do have reserves. So we can, we have time. It's not like I said, if we had no reserve, then we would be in major trouble like some districts. But we do have some time to make thought out, well thought out decisions. Like I said, we don't panic. We went through COVID, we went through other things. But the main thing I want to say with the save harmless is COVID and we had some recessions that we dealt with. Those are like two-year cuts and then you get all your money back. And then they give you money on top of that each year. With this, it's taking the money and it's gone. We're not getting it back. So that, that'll be the, this will be the biggest, if this happens, the biggest financial challenge we've had and these districts have ever had probably in the last 50 years. So, so it'll be interesting to see what happens.
It's, you know, it's concerning, but we shouldn't panic. The district certainly, you know, with the leadership of the board and Mike really was able to really, to really put some reserves in place that we'll be able to use. But what I just want to say is you can't just depend just on reserves for this because that would just create a hole that's going to continue to go. So we have to be strategic on the way we use our reserves and has to be over multiple, multiple, multiple years because you're just creating a hole. So there's going to be a lot of, you know, a lot of discussion on this. We don't, we don't have the crystal ball. We're not going to know until the governor's budget comes. Then the whole district's going to have to come together and we're going to have to advocate super hard to our assembly and our senators. So there's a lot of, we'll see right now. It's alarming. We were alarmed last year, but we're confident that we can come out on top if we all work together as a school community. So a lot more discussion on this. I wish I, I wish we had answers, but we don't. But this is the first kind of recommendation that we have. So what happens now, this goes to the governor's office. The governor's going to read this and they're supposed to use this report to create their budget. And that's what we're waiting for. We're not expecting that budget until January.
Yeah. So January we'll get that. So we'll see what happens. And, and if it does happen, we'll have to advocate like crazy to try to, like I said, to try to keep this in place. You know, every year we get, you know, that helps significantly. So, so we'll see in, in, end of January where we stand.
That presumes the draft budget's on time. Local track record's been good there, right?
Yeah, the January budget comes out on time. It's that when they agree on the final budget, that can take time.
The final budget, that usually, last year, what, middle of April?
We needed literally the day we needed the money for, right?
But we'll at least get her idea of what she wants, you know, what they want to do with the first, that first draft and taking in, we'll see how much they take into account this report.
Do you remember which other agency she stabbed last year? I don't.
Education was the main focus when it came to, unfortunately. I'm not sure why this is such a, a large. The hard thing is, is the district really isn't struggling financially right now. That's the concerning part. Why are they so hyper focused on this piece of it? In the scheme of it, it's a very small piece of the state budget, but it seemed to be a big focus. And that's why, like Mike said, we'll see, it's an election year, you know, will this continue to be a focus this year? We don't know. We don't know. She's been very silent on the topic.
And there's a lot of districts, 337, it's a significant impact. So that's what I'm, I'm kind of hoping, you know, for some of that.
Tomorrow, Mike and I are joining a webinar with hosted by NISCUS, which is the School Superintendent Association. And we are doing a webinar with the Rockefeller Center who made the recommendations. So we'll be getting some more insight specifically from them coming forward. And we work with a lot of lobbying as, as superintendents, we work with a lot of lobbyists through the BOSIs that work with, that partner with all the districts. And I have a meeting with them on Friday. So we're going to be hearing more, more information will be coming from that. And then our focus after the holidays is going to be really lobbying for state aid. And we'll keep you up to date how we all can get involved. I know you're, you're, again, we don't know what's going to happen, but I know we're all gearing up, NISCUS, NISBA, you know, to do different lobbying days, to meet with senators, meet with assembly, because they're going to make the final decision at the end like they did last year. And luckily they were able to advocate for us and put another hold on it. But the talk out there, if it doesn't come this year, it's, it's coming down the pike. Changes will be coming down the pike. And like Mike said, the hard part with our district is we're considered wealthy. And that doesn't mean our families that come to Chatham are wealthy. It just means that our, our property owners, you know, have some wealth. So it doesn't always, you know, it doesn't always work that way. And the other thing is our enrollment has gone down. So that's two whammies that Chatham is facing in this, in this challenge that we might be facing.
I'll bet you that a lot of those 237 schools are small schools like ours.
Correct.
And we just depend on it. I mean, for years, every year it seems we've been threatened with this.
Yeah.
All the time, way back, way, way back, we're threatened with losing save harmless. It would be, it would be terrible for our district if we did.
If you look at the numbers, it's mostly rural districts. So the urban and the suburban are staying constant because their numbers haven't gone down. It's not our fault. Gosh, I wish we could get more enrollment. I really do. You know, it's nothing we can do. It's out of our, the enrollment piece is out of our control. I know, I know. So let's all, you know, our thing is we're going to be transparent. We're going to be putting an email out to all faculty and staff in the community, just kind of giving the update of what the recommendation was. And my job, I feel, and Mike's job is to be transparent and to communicate, good or bad. And we're just going to give honest what's happening. We don't have the answers, but this is, this was the next step was this report. The next step is going to be the governor's budget. And the next step is going to be advocating with our assembly and senate, depending on what they say. Let's hope it's an election year. Maybe this won't be a topic she wants to push this year. But we'll see.
We'll see. It ain't over. It ain't over. Think positive. We'll just keep moving forward and just trying to stay as informed as possible. All right. Next item is new business, motion to approve Booster Club fundraising. R40, be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the proposal for student fundraising submitted by the Chatham Central School District Booster Club in the projected amount of $4,950 after expenses. Such proposal is to solicit donations from patrons in the projected amount of 7,000. All fundraising must comply with the Board Regents Rule 19.6 and School District Policy 5251. Can I have a motion? Does anybody have any questions?
Is this the first time we've done this type of like visibility here for these fundraisers? Because it's, I don't remember looking at the budgets and the projected raises before.
Yeah. So we looked at after what happened this summer, when I was interim, we had that fundraiser that shouldn't have happened and I had to put a halt to. We are working on policy and updating, but there is, when you read our policy, it could say to ask for that. We asked for this for our clubs if they're going to raise over 3, 3,000 total or 2,000 for a fundraiser. So I reached, I reached out to the boosters and they said they were trying to do this. I asked the amount. So I put together this, we're going to go forward with the boosters are going to have to do this for, if there's going to raise a certain amount of money. And any fundraiser, we're going to want at least superintendent approval if it's less than that for, we do it with the students now, superintendent or principal, but we want the boosters because we also have to know what they're doing. We want to make sure we want to do what they're doing and make sure we have insurance in place and all that.
And policy is working on that. That will be presented, I believe, at the first meeting in January, that we'll have the final draft for that with the updated language. And then obviously Andrew and Mike are working on doing the procedures from there, internal procedures from there.
Yeah. And at the end of the day, we don't want fatigue the community with too many like fundraiser and fundraisers. We just need to kind of manage it. So this was the benchmark that was set up.
And I think this is great, just having the visibility. But also I, I don't know if this is going to create more thoughtfulness through the process, but putting a budget together seems like a useful activity. Did you guys work out anything around payment processing? Or that's, we, we didn't enter into those waters when you were looking at the policy for this. Because I think that was part of the concern.
Someone just turn on automatically when I speak? Sorry about that. I, I believe we didn't put in a specific number within policy that will be sorted out within the internal procedures that Andrew and Mike are working on. They actually have a form that will be filled out from now on. But I, I don't have it in front of me. We did have language that it needs to be approved on what that.
The processor.
So what, what would happen is?
That's the vendor does.
Yeah. So if, so dependent on the, so the Booster Club or PTA or whatever organization would fill out this form. And then I would have to sign off on it. So before I sign off on it, I would have to inquire to see what the procedures are, you know, what the, what they're using, what vendor they're using. And then I would make that decision based upon what it is that they're using. So say if I got something like what was used before, it would be my job to, to ask them quite the right questions to make sure. And if something like that was happening where they kept 30%, I would say, sorry, we can't.
Was it really 30%?
Was it 30%?
Yes.
Because I saw some competitors that took zero or like one.
That's why, that's why we need this little oversight. So we don't let things like that.
And that's what the policy metrics is, is the oversight.
All right. I, I, not to pick on the Booster Club here, but because I think this is great. But thanks.
Okay. So all in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Okay. So the second motion, new business, R41, that the Board of Education approve the agreement with CASDA for October 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2025 for professional service, which may include, but is not limited to codifying human resource processes and procedures at the rate of $5,150 and authorize the superintendent to sign the agreement. Do I have a motion?
Second?
Does anybody have any questions about this agreement? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So moved. Now the consensus agenda, R42, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda J through L as written. Can I have a motion? Anybody have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So moved. Okay. So the items for future agenda, did we want to just jot down that, I think we discussed it.
Well, it's just like more comfortable making that request.
Sure. Yes. Yep. I'm okay with that. Not anything like right, it's not a higher priority. It's no timeline, but. Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. That sounds good.
So Deb, if you can add that to that spreadsheet tomorrow that we created.
Okay. So we have now the second public comment. Does anybody have anything they want to comment upon about the agenda tonight? Okay. All right. So can I have an emotion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Happy holidays to everyone.